Our regular city council meeting will now come to order. Mr. Wadsworth, would you lead us in the pleasure?
Sure, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Burcroft, our City Treasurer, Stacy Page. Guest, administration guest that have joined this meeting. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for October 5th, 2020. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting app. Tonight's meeting ID number is 851-8288.
Can't hear you.
Okay, alright, let's try it now, so now it's muted. Sorry, for those that's wishing to join this meeting by phone, the phone number is 646-558-8656. Enter the meeting ID followed by the pound sign. At this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here.
And Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. I'm gonna ask that our agenda be amended to strike number 11 warrant. We're kinda using a template for our agenda, and so the warrant was actually placed as an agenda item. So if we could amend the agenda to strike warrant from the agenda. And so at this time, I will ask council to approve an amended agenda as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Number five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Number 11 will be communication, and number 12 will be adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the amended council meeting agenda as presented.
So move to accept the amended agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the amended agenda as presented. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
Number two are the minutes. For approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 28th, 2020.
So move for the minutes of September 28th, 2020.
Support.
In motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the minutes held on September 28th, 2020. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
Agenda item 2B, for approval are the minutes from the special meetings held on September 28th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. There was a closed session to discuss an attorney opinion.
So move for approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on September 28th, 2020.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes for our special meeting held on September 28th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Closed session, attorney opinion. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
There are no petitioners this evening, therefore, number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight at 6:45 PM, we have a special meeting study session on quarterly investment by our Treasurer Stacy Page. At this time, the Chair is going to recognize Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro tem. I would like to make a motion to continue to hold our meetings of the City Council via Zoom until such time deemed by the council and the recommendation of not only our legal counsel, but complying with the CDC, as well as the State Department DHHS, DHHS orders, and/or Wayne County Health Department regarding the health and safety of the elected officials and the public in attendance.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, and that was to continue holding meetings of the City Council via Zoom until such time deemed by the council and that the recommendation of legal counsel that all appropriate CDC recommendations for the health and safety of the elected officials and public in attendance can be met and guidelines are less restricted to allow for more reasonable number of members of the public can be attend throughout the meeting of the City Council. Any discussion? Here are no discussion, roll call, vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you. That concludes the chairperson's report.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved, thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, our clerk, deputy clerk, and treasurer and listening audience. First, I wanted to comment on the word we got last week about the Kroger. I had some questions from some official officials and some state officials. What typically we do is coordinate with these big developments and do a press release. On this one, Kroger did their own press release ahead of time. So even though we were prepped and ready to go, they put the word out there quicker than both we wanted and the state and some others, but they're excited and we're excited about the $95 million investment and the 250 new jobs. And also, one thing I've heard loud and clear from council and from residents is community benefit. And so that's what we're gonna get, but typically, we would coordinate better with that. So that's why that happened the way it did. They kinda beat everybody to punch, unfortunately, even the state. I do have two action items tonight under my report for your consideration. The first is item number A. This is a request from Captain Josh Monty from the Police Department. Also, Attorney Steve Hitchcock reviewed this, and we're asking to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution, which has authorized the mayor and clerk to enter into the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the 2019 Justice Assistant Grant Funding Program, and that award for the City of Romulus will accept monies from Wayne County Department of Homeland Security. The amount is $12,102.
And Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the 2019 Justice Assistance Program.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for approval of intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County Justice Assistant Program Grant. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Barton, Mr. Chair, one just quick question. Is Josh on the line? I just wanted to know what we were gonna use the funds for.
Yes, Captain Monty is on the line.
Okay.
Good evening, Council, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. For these specific funds, we're utilizing a portion of the money for cloud-based storage for our speed trailer. We are also gonna purchase additional soar-based speed limit signs to put in some of our neighborhoods and some of our, to address some of our traffic complaints in the area. And these will be able to move around, they're mobile, they stick in the ground using a post. The DPW will assist us in moving those signs.
Thank you, Captain Monty, all the liable expenses, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next item is for the police also, but this is a recommendation from Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director and Gary Harris Purchasing Director. What you have before you is a request to concur with administration and consent to the piggyback MyDeal contract, number stated 07B7700181. That's for the purchase of five 2021 Ford Police Utility Interceptors. Those are from Gornall Ford. Total cost of the package, $182,260. Those funds have been verified and available out of the Motor Vehicle Fund.
Through the Chair if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion for the purchase of five 2021 Ford Police Utility Interceptors. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the purchase of the five 2021 Ford Police Utility Interceptors. Any discussions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, quick question. I don't know if this is for Kathy or Captain Monty. Just a quick question, with the purchase of these vehicles, are we gonna be retiring any of these police vehicles that we currently have?
Let's see, we're gonna ask him to unmute, his hand is raised. Councilwoman.
Okay.
Good evening, Councilwoman Tally. Yes, we're gonna utilize, the DPW is gonna go through the vehicles and assess their use, and we will flip some of the vehicles over to use, to city use. So we can reuse those vehicles for city purposes.
Got it, thank you, Captain.
You're welcome.
And through the Chair if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
Captain Monty, while you're still there, at least I'm glad to see that these vehicles are ready for the road package.
Correct, these, there is still gonna be some upfitting involved. Cages are gonna have to be moved, center council's gonna have to be moved. But the wiring is all in there, it's just a matter of kinda plugging the lights in and then swapping existing equipment to new vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda, number six is the clerk's report. Under 6A1, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment 2021-6, Library. This budget amendment was introduced at the September 28th, 2020 regular council meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Roscoe?
I will make that motion for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-6 for the library introduced at the 9/28/20 regular city council meeting.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for second reading of the 2021-6. Any discussion? Here are no discussion? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item 6B, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment 2021-7, Library. This budget amendment was introduced at the September 28th, 2020 regular council meeting.
Make that motion for a second reading, final adoption of Amendment, Budget Amendment 20/21-7 for the library introduced at the 9/28/20 regular city council meeting.
Support.
Who supported that?
Both of us did, Tina, you won it. Tina.
It doesn't matter, either one.
Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment 2021-7, Library introduction at 7, at the 9/28, with a council meeting. Any discussion? Here are no discussion, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
6D, also for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment 2021-8, Library. And this budget amendment was introduced at the September 28th, 2020 regular council meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, I will move for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-8, Library. That was introduced September 28th. It's in the amount of $1,885.
Support.
In motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-8, 1, Library, introduced at the 9/28/20 regular city council meeting. Any discussion? Here are no discussion? Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
6D, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment 2021-9 for Public Safety, introduced at the September 28th, 2020 regular council meeting.
Chair, I'll make that motion for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment 20-21-9 for Public Safety introduced at the 9/28/20 regular city council meeting.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-9, Public Safety, introduced at the September 28th, 20, regular city council meeting. Any discussion? Here are no discussion, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Last action item under the clerk's report is 6E, which is a study session request. Kevin Lozen, Director of Human Resources, is requesting a one-hour study session for October 12th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. And this is to discuss the retiree health plans. The date and time are available for the study session. In addition, the study session approved at the regular council meeting on September 28th to discuss the Wayne and E-course intersection improvement and land acquisition has been moved to 6 o'clock on the same day. So you had, just a reminder, you had approved that study session last week, and so we wanted to make sure, make that adjustment at this council meeting. So it'll be at 6 o'clock for 30 minutes, and then we'll go right into the second study session for 6:30. And that, again, and that's to discuss the retiree healthcare plan.
Through the Chair if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
Ask the clerk, do we need to just make the one motion, which will include all that we have here in front of us, or just for the motion for the study session that our Human Resource Director is requesting?
Just the one study session, Councilwoman Webb.
Alright, thank you. Well, I'd like to make that motion to schedule the study session to discuss the retiree healthcare plan on October 12th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Support.
I believe it was Councilwoman Williams that supported that, if I'm, I believe so.
Okay. Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, our study session request from Kevin Lozen, HR Director, for October 12th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Before I close out my report, for your information, I provided a memorandum to you with regards to the Wick Road construction on Election Day. It was discussed, was brought up at the last council meeting, but there had been some questions and concerns regarding the construction on Wick Road and its impact on the access to the Romulus Middle School. We provided for you a copy of a postcard that was mailed out last week, and it went to all the residents who vote at the middle school at that polling location. Since Wick Road will not be accessible on Election Day, detour route signage will be set up directing the residents to the middle school polling location. So we cited along those routes that we will have signage so that people will clearly see, you know, how to get to the middle school. And my understanding, and the mayor, or Roberto may have to correct me, I do not believe that there will be any construction activity going on on Election Day. That's just an update for you. Also, lastly, on the same subject as elections, the clerk's office will have some extended hours beginning on October 9th. So every Friday leading up to the Friday before the election, we will extend our hours until 5 o'clock, and that's only on Fridays. So our hours will be from 8 to 5 o'clock, and it's only with regards to election matters, registering to vote or voting, or obtaining an absentee ballot. On Saturday, October 31st, we will be open from 8 AM to 4 o'clock PM. And if I could back up for October 30th, that last Friday, that would be the last day that we can actually mail an absentee ballot to voters. So those that are requesting that ballot, that would be the last day that we would be allowed to mail that ballot. However, on Saturday, voters can come in, pick up their ballots personally, and take the ballots home with them, or they can vote the ballot here at the clerk's office. And then lastly, the Monday, the day before the election, on November 2nd, that will be the absolute last day that I can issue an absentee ballot to voters. The difference is, the voters will have to vote the ballot here at the clerk's office. They will not be able to take the ballots home with them. And again, if you have any questions regarding elections, please do not hesitate to call our office at 734-942-7540. Or if you have questions, you can send us an email at elections@romulusgov.com. And our website with election information has been updated. So those that are viewing, or you have family members that still need to register to vote or like to register online, obtain an application, they can do so. We have links available on our city website. And with that, that concludes the clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You are so welcome. Mr. Chair, I believe Councilwoman Abdo is requesting to speak.
Oh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes, I know that we passed a motion saying there should be no construction the day of Election Day. I just guess I want assurance from Roberto that they have agreed to that, or that that's gonna happen.
Yes, that's, that will, they'll cease construction, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Abdo?
If there's no more comments or questions from council, it takes us to number seven, and that would be the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. I do not have any items under my report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Number eight is public comment. And this is a portion of the meeting. For those members of the public that have joined this meeting and they wish to have comments, the raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've called in, we ask that you please press the star 9 from your phone, or again, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the consent of the chairperson. Also, during this period of time, those that would like to submit a written comment via email may do so to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. Again, that's publiccomment@romulusgov.com. And that's before the end of this portion, the public comment portion of the meeting. Mr. Chair, we do have a raised hand from a member of the public, and I'm going to acknowledge Tony Heinberger. Go ahead, Mr. Heinberger.
Good evening, Council. This is Tony Heinberger, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you for the information on some of the Kroger, but I had a few more questions on that because there's several people in the community that would like to know more information. What area is this going in? If it is a TIF district that it's going in, please know, as Council I'm sure is aware, that we don't get a lot of money into the general fund from that because it goes into the TIF district fund, which we need money in our general fund. And if our liaison for the Planning Commission from the council could at least let us know what is going on with us, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, does anybody else that's wishing, that would like to speak at this time, please indicate using the raise hand method. You will be acknowledged. Mr. Chair, there are no, there is no indication of anyone else with the raise hand wishing to participate in this part of the meeting.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we, uh, close that part out.
Thank you. Number nine is unfinished business.
Any unfinished business?
And Chair, I mean, and Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
I can address one of Tony's questions in regards to the Planning Commission. First of all, we weren't aware that Kroger's was coming in until it was announced publicly. And as soon as things come on our agenda regarding the site or anything, I can definitely let him know and let the, you know, rest of the council know.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
You're welcome.
I can add to that, Mr. Chairman. We were under a non-disclosure up until the point that it was announced. So that played into a little bit, but we'll be happy to share information with the resident.
Thank you, Mayor.
If there's no further unfinished business, takes us to number 10, new business.
Any new business?
Alright. Takes us to number 11, communication.
Yes.
Ms. uh, Tally?
Thank you. Uh, first, I want to thank the mayor for bringing us up to speed on the Kroger fulfillment center. I know it came out last week. Uh, one of my questions is gonna be, could we get some additional information? So thank you, Mayor, for that additional information. Um, and what it means for our community and our residents. That's a, that's a huge win, and so that's just um very exciting. So thank you for sharing that information. Uh, the other thing I want to address too, we got a memo uh from, it looks like uh our Chief of Staff, Julie White-Tocco, uh regarding the senior center, and there was a, a portion in this memo that I wanted to observe. And it was talking about how the senior center is absorbing, observing the COVID-related orders, but it was refreshing to see that in this memo also, that the uh daily senior resident activities inside the building were shut down, but the senior services led by Director Rose Swedon continue to provide necessary daily services to our senior residents and have added additional services for the community throughout this pandemic. And that we should applaud for uh her dedication and their team, the, uh teams, the dedication to our residents and for finding creative solve to provide and add services while adhering to the executive order. So I just want to give Directors Swedon, uh, Rose, uh, uh, an applause and a shout out for what she did for our seniors and what she always has done for our seniors at the senior center, and just keeping them safe and protected. And um I know she says she's been working hard implementing necessary changes and reorganization within the building, that's where it's preparing for when we are able to reopen again. So I just want to top heads off to Rose for all her hard work at the senior center. And also on that note, um, just also talk about that there was a cornhole tournament this past Saturday that was a benefit to benefit low-income seniors. Um, I want to shout out to Carol Bales for the beautiful basket she provided for the event. Maria Lambert also, and if there were some others, I don't know, but I just want to shout out for the ones I knew, Carol Bales and Maria Lambert. And if there's others, please, I just say, hey, uh, shout out to you as well. And then also for um the team, the city and the team for putting it together. We were outside masked and social distanced, and it was a fun time. Um, shout out to Lynn Conway and Maria, who was there supporting on the path of the senior center. Mark Edwards, one of our own in the city of Romulus, was out there supporting Bob McCray out there, um, and everybody was masked. So thank you for all you do, Rose, for the senior center, for the city, for what they do to help our seniors. Um, I look, this is struggling, challenging times right now. So I want to thank everybody for their, helping our seniors, looking out for them during these times. And what a great event it was, all the monies raised was to help our low-income seniors um during these, help them during these challenging times. So um there were trophies for the winners. There was the first, second, and third place winners, and they took away trophies as an event for this event. So thank them for participating to help our, our seniors. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Yes, Ms. Webb?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I just noticed Councilwoman uh Roscoe's hand was up, so I'm sorry. Oh, no, I just wanted to piggyback on what um Councilwoman Tally was stating in regards to the memo. And I want to thank our Finance Director, Ms. Ferris. She gave this to us as requested, this breakdown of the D T E bill. And the only thing that was missing, uh, Councilwoman uh Tally, was the um H V A C had to continue to run. And the main consistency of the electrical use is not lighting. It is in the rooftop. So failure to keep that building at a moderate range could have caused cracking and dry walls and other damage. Because we all know when we have homes, if you live in a very hot climate, that air conditioner, whether you're there or not, must remain on. And if you're in a cold climate, where we live, and you're gone, we also must keep the heat on a certain level to keep pipes from um, um, breaking. So thank you, Ms. Ferris, for this itemized listing.
Thank you. Any more communications?
I do, John.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes, I just want to uh address some uh fall yard maintenance reminders. First of all, I would like to inform everyone that Waste Management has extended their weeks, and they'll be picking up yard waste through the second full week in December. But also, I want to remind everyone that, you know, you need to use proper waste yard containers or the brown paper bags. Uh, please don't put out the black trash bags, what have you, anything like that, because they won't pick them up. Um, and also, if they ever have any issues, or you have extra bulk items that you need picked up, um, you can call eight six six seven nine seven nine zero one eight. And that is the Waste Management phone number, and they can help you if you have uh, you know, where they've missed picking up your, any of your garbage or any of your bins. You know, give them a call. They'll address it and, and get after it. But again, it, you know, this is fall. Leaves are gonna start falling. People are gonna start trimming up for winter. You know, just make sure, if you have any questions, you're not sure what they'll pick up or not, call them. Ask first so you don't end up having something laying out in front of your yard for, you know, weeks on, on end. But anyways, um, that's all we have tonight, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe. Ms.?
We had, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Oh, Mr. Chair, um, just, we had Councilwoman Williams had her hand up too. I'm trying to keep track of who had their hand up. Um, next, I mean, whoever you call, but just to let you know, we have two hands, Wildsworth and Williams.
Okay, who was first?
Uh, it was, Williams was first.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to inform the residents and uh those that participated in the uh Forgotten Harvest uh Distribution, that uh it won't be uh this coming Tuesday, well, actually tomorrow, but we will uh resume next Tuesday, starting at twelve to three. Uh, so we're asking the residents not to uh enter up on the property until after eleven o'clock. Uh, and, and we appreciate the support uh from the city and uh uh all the elected officials and the department heads that have made sure that this message got out to the residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Wildsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Barton. Now, this is for Rose also. Um, I had an individual come to me about a month ago, and their, their mother was fighting um spinal cancer. And she had one of those two-wheeled walkers, and it was causing her all kinds of problems. And I, and I went to Rose and, and about, it took her about four or five days, and she found her a four-wheel walker that's got brakes, and which is, which is now allowing her to, you know, leave her, to um, um, leave her home. And all I want to say is the family appreciates you, Rose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth.
Is there any more communication from Council?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I, uh, through the chair, um, I had a text message to come through. Where will the Kroger, Kroger's Distribution Center be located?
It'll be located on Warman Road, uh, so between uh Eureka and Pennsylvania. Uh, if you know where the Penske facility is, about halfway through, uh, it'll be just uh west of that.
Okay, and is it, will it be a new building or existing building?
New building.
New building. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else from Council, uh, then it takes us to the last agenda item, number twelve, adjournment.
Provo.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for adjournment. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.